Honored to be a part of this first committee meeting of this academic year. And so I'm just going to make a couple of brief comments. And then I'm gonna get out of the way because we have other things on the agenda. And we have four amazing students to for you to hear from. And I don't want to take time away from that, so. But we've had a great start to the year, a lot of activity, wonderful orientations for our students. And the opportunity to engage in newness for everyone. I want you to know that we have a new set of student leaders in our university student senate. And we had the opportunity to spend the weekend in Hunter Mountain. Uh, making certain that they were oriented to the work that they get to do and to each other. And to having the opportunity to form as a group. Because that becomes so important in the work that gets done. And so we're honored that we were able to be a part of that. Some of us around the table were there and were able to engage in those activities. But what I can tell you about this group of students that we will interact with over the course of the year. Is that they are ready to be leaders. They are ready to take us forward. And they are making certain that they hold us responsible, accountable. And make certain that the things that are necessary for CUNY students to advance. That we are about that business. And so we're excited to have them and to be a part of that process. And so Salimatu, thank you as a trustee and as a student leader. For making certain that they have the tools that they need to be successful. So, thank you. Um, over the course of the next few months, you will hear a number of things. That we will be implementing to assure that our students needing accommodations to support their academic success. Have what is most important for them. We will be providing training to the staff in our offices of disabilities. To make certain that they are familiar with the New York State policies and laws that are affiliated. And that they understand how we as a university are stepping up to be certain that students get what they need. There is a special series of trainings for faculty and academic staff. To be certain they are fully aware of the resources and responsibilities associated with our students with disabilities. And to ensure their accessibility. And so there is a three-part uh, training program for them. The first is focused on disability rights in education. The second on the New York State IT accessibility policy and laws. And how that impacts the classroom. And the third part of that series is best practices for teaching students with disabilities. So a serious focus for us and an important one for our students. They are also, there will also be the identification and implementation of a platform for managing, managing requests for accommodations. And for tracking our university responses to those requests at the campus level and at the university level. Last week, the university's uh, human resources department sponsored the university diversity dialogues. And featured veterans as an important population contributing to the tapestry that is CUNY. Featured were our CUNY Office of Veterans Affairs. Our partner, Commissioner James Hendon, who is always just such a bu- bubble full of energy. At any given moment, he just, just overflows when he presents and did just that last week. And our project, PROVE. PROVE is the project for return and opportunity in veterans education. And PROVE is a model that the country is looking at. I want you to know it is getting a lot of attention. Both Leora Shidowsky, who is the director and the program itself, is garnering attention across the country. And people are looking at it as a model for supporting veteran students. For making certain that they get the supports they need from a mental health perspective. Because they, there are interns who are social work students. Who work directly with the veterans through that program. So we are proud of what is happening there. And we acknowledge the honors and the awards and the accolades that have come their way. I'm going to stop there in the interest of time and turn it back over to our chair.
Thank you. We'll take up the following items for approval. Action item two A is the approval of minutes for the June fifth, uh, twenty twenty-three meeting. I move the approval of action item two A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The um, the actions approved. Uh, with no action items on the policy counter, uh, calendar, I'll now move to the information items on the agenda. I call on interim CUNY Athletics Conference Commissioner Carl Christian to present item three A, the CUNY Act Quarterly Report.
Mr. Christian. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I hope everybody's doing well. Thank you for, you know, for inviting us to provide some updates on CUNY athletics. Um, I shared some PowerPoint, um, just sort of some reference point to the overall presentation. I just wanted to kind of present a general overview of obviously early in the semester, early in the season of where we're at currently. And uh, obviously it's continuation of the end of year report that we provided in June. Um, we'll begin, uh, initially, uh, we had preseason educational events for the student athletes and the coaches. This is the first time that was conducted in person, um, in the last four years. So it was great to be able to get back to that. We had, um, over two hundred and fifty attendees. And we covered, um, a range of topics as you see from the report. Um, many of these are kind of hot topics currently from an NCAA and student athlete perspective. Certainly student athlete mental health. Um, and uh, the gambling prevention, uh, certainly is something that the new NCA president, when we met with him in the summer. Has, has expressed concerns about, um, you know, as a gateway and just concerns from a student wellness perspective. Uh, beyond that, for the coaches, we did a focus upon, uh, rules changes, rules updates, both senior and junior college. And um, we're trying to engage with our partners and our sponsors more. So HSS actually came in and did a presentation and provided resources around injury prevention, sports safety, you know, for our coaches. And um, we had a presentation from student conduct around conflict resolution also. Because many of our coaches are into the lifeline for the student athletes and basically need to be a resource day to day. So any additional, uh, training we can provide in that regards. Um, moving on into the fall season, we're seeing an uptick in participation. It's still a process, uh, to get back to really numbers, um, kind of pre-pandemic if you will. Uh, we've seen a three percent increase over the fall sports to date. And we still have a week or so before the rosters close. So we expect that participation numbers between, you know, a four to five percent increase for the fall. And we'll hopefully see, uh, continuation of that, uh, throughout the season. Um, there are still a couple of campuses and a couple of sports specifically, uh, where we've seen some historical challenges. And again, we're continuing to work with those campuses and have that communication around, um, core sports. What sports are most viable, given the resources, given facilities at this time. And also in terms of the campuses that have had challenges around certain sports, how we can best assist. We did have three campuses that had new athletic directors come on, um, over the past couple of months. So obviously that transition can certainly have an impact also. Uh, in terms of our conference office, obviously, uh, hosting the conference championships. Um, in terms of those events, coordination and the execution, I think have always been, uh, positively. You know, embraced by the, uh, the programs and the student athletes. So we're looking to continue that. At the same time to try and streamline, find some more efficiencies where possible. Uh, one of those being, um, the production and streaming, which comes at, you know, quite a, a significant budgetary, uh, impact. So from that perspective, we want to maintain that. But also, again, uh, definitely look for ways to be, um, more efficient. What events have the best ROI, um, in terms of the, the different vendors available? Um, so we actually are working with two vendors this year in that regards. One to realize some efficiencies and also to have an alternate source. Uh, in terms of the events, we'll have twenty-four, possibly twenty-five championships this year. Uh, cheerleading is to be determined once we get the, uh, the kind of final rosters in and see what programs are out in that regards. And then beyond that, we're transitioning, um, the championship streaming to our website. Rather than, in the past, it's been done by Facebook Live or YouTube. We want to make sure that traffic is coming through our website, that we can track that data. And use that again to expand the digital footprint, not just of our conference website, but also our partners. In terms of, you know, the participation numbers, we had over fifteen hundred student athletes participate in postseason last year. And over thirty-five hundred spectators. We certainly expect that number to hold as, if not grow this current year. And we had over ten thousand streaming viewers also. So to be able to bring that under our umbrella definitely is, uh, is advantageous. The focus initially, um, in terms of programming, we want to be intentional, we want to be strategic. And, uh, I mentioned a couple of topics previously. Provide the coaches, many of whom are part-time and don't maybe have, uh, the resources and support that many of the other private programs have. But provide them with additional, um, you know, resources to be successful. Um, first aid CPR training i- is something we've, uh, worked with HSS, one of our, uh, partners, uh, to provide. Uh, along with the, uh, the sports safety program resources I mentioned before. Um, in addition to that, we've hosted meetings with, uh, campus-specific groups in terms of athletics. To help develop that networking, that collaboration. And also identify common problems or challenges and potential solutions. Whether that be through technology or if one campus has found a way to navigate a problem, maybe another's not. Probably that, you know, we can kind of connect those pieces to help them be more successful. And then from a, a conference office standpoint, find ways to remove any of the obstacles, barriers. Um, for campuses that may be running into them. If we can kind of get something cleared at the central level, that potentially would clear the pathway for a campus, um. To follow the same pathway to realizing an opportunity. We had a lot of challenges around officials payments with the transition to CUNY first in terms of procurement. Many campuses were struggling in that regard in terms of around time and the timeline it took. And that ultimately impacts the reputation of not only the department or the campus, but, uh, the conference and CUNY as a whole. So we're exploring a official payment provider. Um, and if, again, we can accomplish that from a conference office perspective, the campuses would potentially be able to do the same thing. Um, we also met with the diversity and inclusion designees, the NCAA earmarked, uh, grant funding specifically towards DEI initiatives. So, you know, obviously we want to make sure they're aware, they're in communication with their athletic directors around, uh, programming for their campus. And also for more conference-wide programming. Um, of the fo- grant funding that was provided, fifty percent was shared directly to the campuses. The other fifty percent was retained to do, uh, broader conference-wide initiatives or to provide professional development training. To a representative from one of our campuses to go to whether the NCAA convention or diversity inclusion, um, institute. Um, things of that nature. And, um, we did have some rollover funds from that grant from last year. Which we utilized to, uh, do a conference membership, uh, for the We Coach program. Which is, you know, an established, um, professional networking program specifically, uh, focused upon female coaches and staff. Um, to support the recruitment, retention and professional development of those individuals. And it's certainly something that the strategic plan, the consultant reports we had in terms of not just the support and retention of coaches as a whole. Uh, but also, um, in terms of, you know, female staff members. That's something that's just basically been launched and we'll assess, uh, the feedback and the effectiveness of that program, uh, moving forward. Uh, from an athletic strategic plan per- perspective, uh, you know, President Eames was going to present on that this evening. Given, uh, her announcement and potential transition, the Athletic Council is reconvening in terms of where things currently stand in terms of the rollout of that plan. And obviously, the commissioner search process and that next transition. Um, in the meantime, my focus is very much on the work. What we can control, what we can kind of prioritize for this immediate, um, semester and year. And ultimately, what would be most impactful for the campuses and the student athletes. So from that perspective, you know, I mentioned the officials payment provider. That's something we're looking at. In addition to that compliance software, uh, there are kind of industry standard compliance software out there. So we're looking into potentially a conference-wide agreement in that regards. Especially where those offices are very kind of oftentimes a one-person office. And, uh, the responsibilities and, uh, the volume that's placed upon those offices is substantial. And in the event something is missed or something's not handled in a timely manner, obviously the, uh, there's exposure is there. So we want to do everything we can to kind of provide those, those individuals with the resources to best manage that. And those platforms not only help in terms of compliance management, many of them have them have additional resources for recruiting. For tracking the recruiting process and to use for the coaches to manage the recruiting, uh, piece, which is quite significant. And, uh, also in terms of team communication and, uh, things of that nature. So, um, that's certainly we feel something that would be helpful. And, um, beyond that, potentially, uh, doing a operating manual audit for our office. In which we would also look at the membership agreements and, um, such like, because. A, a lot of that information has been accumulated over time and I think it really needs an overhaul and, and some cleaning up. So that's, again, something we feel should be a priority. And that's, again, based on feedback that we received from, not just the reports, but also the ADs. Um, in terms of collaborations, we've had several meetings that I've had with, uh, different departments from, from CUNY. Met with CUNY Communications about ways in which we can better collaborate. And, um, make sure that they're getting, um, you know, stories and, uh, the exposure that potentially at times we can provide. And likewise, we're able to kind of utilize, uh, some of their resources where possible. Um, and similarly, I met with student conduct. There, there were some outreach with questions about, you know, one or two, um, incidents that occurred in the last athletic season. So there was kind of clarification as to what that process looked like from an athletics perspective, the rules, the regulations by each governing body. And anything potentially above and beyond that, whether it be from a, a conduct or a Title IX perspective, how basically that would be handled. But ultimately, I'm just trying to build those bridges and ensure better communication, um, between our office, the campuses and, uh, central office. Um, and then finally, we've worked closely with OGC to renew all of our sport official assigner agreements. There's currently a national officiating shortage. To get good, quality officials is a challenge. And, um, all of those agreements were either up for renewal or expired. So we worked with OGC and procurement to basically reinstate agreements across all sports. And then finally, in terms of the sponsorships, um, we did retain all of our sponsors. The Health First sponsorship did, was reduced, uh, to ten thousand this year, but they are retaining with us. They were happy with the services we provided. The challenge on their end was their ability to actualize a lot of the opportunities that we were able to provide with our championship events and things of that nature. Um, we did recently get an update from, from the Pepsi Agreement and that was very well received by the campuses. We had an in-kind donation, uh, of supplies and equipment, uh, from Gatorade through that. And, uh, those were, you know, certainly very helpful for the, the programs in terms of. You know, whether it's water bottles, paper cups, towels, you know, coolers, stuff that then they had to go out and buy if that donation was not forthcoming. So again, an, an additional, uh, budgetary impact over and above, you know, inflation and all of the writing costs that we're seeing. Um, you know, I've touched on a couple of the challenges, certainly in terms of, you know, obviously the, whether it's transition at, at a director position. Athletic trainers and officials, you know, I'd, I'd mentioned bri- previously as, um, positions that have national shortages. And we've seen some turnover in, um. And I, I obviously touched on compliance. So despite the circumstances, looking at ways that we can kind of manage that and control that. You know, one, uh, concept that we're currently working on is in regards to the officiating piece. We want to coordinate some officiating training with our assigners or the sports governing bodies for our student athletes. Future officials oftentimes are student athletes. As a former coach, some of my former student athletes, you know, officiated youth games and so forth. And that's a pipeline for the future. It can take up to eight years to become a collegiate official. But ultimately, we have to start somewhere. And also it provides an opportunity to those students to, you know, potentially get some extra work and extra experience. While at the same time, they're gaining a greater appreciation of the role of the official. Which hopefully that would then, um, translate on the field of play. Um, in terms of facilities, I think more recently the challenges have been in terms of. I think really access. Um, there's several facilities that, you know, especially the out, outdoor facilities, whether it's Randalls Island. Where several of the soccer fields are now kind of the site for the migrant, um, facility. Um, whether it's sharing the facilities where some campuses have strong rental relationships. And then the ability to provide that facility to, uh, another campus at all or at a nominal amount becomes a challenge. And ultimately, in terms of, um, even access to permits and so forth, you know. So, you know, we work to support the campuses as best we can. We're also looking at other alternatives through the lifeguard task force. I connected with Asphalt Green, who actually have a soccer field. And we've had some discussion around potential opportunities to utilize that space. So I'm always looking for that collaboration, that win-win. It can't just make sense for, you know, whether it's our office or the campus or the, it's, it's got to make sense for everybody. Same with our partners and our sponsors. It's how can we best grow that relationship? How can we add value to them? So they're going to be more invested in working with us going forward. And how can we be more strategic in that regards? Um, obviously, you know, developing the relationship with New York City Parks. Um, negotiating some preferred pricing around, you know, I use, CUNY used to have certain facilities that we tend to use. Those type of things can be helpful. Um. One thing I brought forward to the Athletic Council was kind of a, a facilities policy around athletics. You know, whether it speaks to revenue rental baseline, whether it speaks to preferred CUNY rates. In the event of, you know, uh, scheduling conflict, things of that nature, just to set a baseline. It doesn't necessarily have to hold everybody to the same standard, but it sets a baseline in terms of minimal expectations, which I think would be helpful. Um, I touched on participation earlier. That relates to sports sponsorship. Uh, what does that mean exactly from an NCA perspective? Uh, our programs are required to meet minimum sponsorship levels. Whether that might be for, let's say, for soccer, you have to play thirteen games with at least seven players. For volleyball, you have to play at least, you know, eighteen games with six players. So there are minimales. And then that's where in some cases with those participation levels, that can create a challenge. If a school or a program does not meet that minimum baseline, they can potentially be placed on probation for that next season. And they need to demonstrate how they would accomplish that. Through the pandemic, there was flexibility provided. As we transition off of that now, um, that will be less the case. But certainly, by being able to build our numbers, by trying to focus in and identify the programs that are most viable. Not just historically what have we done, but what makes sense today. And that oftentimes is a difficult conversation. Because nobody wants to change, nobody wants to drop programs certainly. But, uh, things happen, you know. Division one, St. Francis, you know, think a successful athletic program with a, a athletic director that had received accolades for her work over the last couple of years. And now that program unfortunately folded. Conference realignment, I'm sure we see it in the news in terms of the Pac-12 and this and even at Division three. There was a conference in the Northeast where members went to other conferences, that conference ceased to exist. There's a lot of realigning, there's a lot of movement going on. So my feedback to the, to the ADs and the council is, what can we control? What is in our best interest moving forward? How can we solidify and protect our position? And that relates to AQs, which impact student experience. AQs are automatic bids to the NCAA postseason. Which ultimately, as an athlete, that's, you know, the golden ticket if you will, right? So we want to provide that and we want to protect that. But if we have a sport like women's soccer, where we only have six schools sponsoring, which is a minimum. And if one school has some challenges, potentially we can lose that AQ for that year and for the following years until we get back in good standing. And that doesn't just impact the student athletes in that program, it also impacts the other student athletes. So for me, I'm very much trying to focus on what we can control and how we can kind of better position ourselves in the long term. And, um, you know, I, I mentioned women's soccer and baseball as an example. We only have four schools sponsor baseball, so we don't have an AQ. So unless we can bring in additional membership or schools choose, other schools choose to sponsor it, that will remain the, remain the case. Um, and then finally, in terms of athletic competitiveness, Division three ultimately is about student experience. And that balance between academic and athletic and often you hear the student life ultimately, um, is providing that experience. Um, at the same time, athletes are competitive and we want to provide that opportunity to compete at high level in New York City. We certainly have a pool to pull from where, you know, we have the ability to be, uh, competitive. So it's how can we best ensure that? By providing a positive experience, by providing the right type of facilities. Ev- even on the coaching side, not just the experience of the coach, but the time commitment. Which is, is obviously based upon, uh, the role and the, uh, support they're able to get from the camp, from the, uh, campuses. So this, the opportunity is there and ultimately that would help the greater, um, campus reputation. And as you see, a team has a run in the NCAA's or it gives greater exposure, not just to that institution, but to the conference and, uh, CUNY as a whole. Um, finally, in terms of one event that we worked with, the Student Athlete Advisory Committee last year, first time. We kicked off an inaugural, um, Student Athlete Career Fair. We worked with the career development officers, our business partners, uh, sponsors. And, uh, Brew, Brew College were kind enough to, to serve as host last year. Um, it's something we want to continue and, and work and develop. And so that, uh, speaks to that. A lot of employers do, um, actively recruit student athletes. There's a lot of attributes they need to develop which serve them well in, in business, uh, and life beyond college. Time management, teamwork, mental and physical toughness, a lot of things, right? So from that perspective, we want to connect those student athletes with those prospective employers, connect them with internship opportunities. And help develop that network. So, you know, we made that available to all fourteen campuses, all of the student athletes. And we're looking to do so again, um, this coming spring. And that summates my, uh, my updates. You know, uh, can't say it any better now, the city plays here. And we just want to continue to support our student athletes and ensure they have as positive experience as possible. And, uh, we, we can help kind of continue to rebuild and re, regrow our programs, um, at this juncture.
Uh, thank you, uh, Interim Commissioner. I wanted to, um, just highlight, uh, no, obviously this, this isn't your portfolio, but if we have athletic training programs in CUNY.
Yep.
We can pipeline those students directly into our athletic programs. When I was rehabbing at SUNY Cortland, uh, a fraternity brother of mine was my, uh, rehab assistant as an athletic trainer. He now runs Seton Hall's athletic training program. So, um, that's a way to, for us to synergize our, our education and our.
It's definitely in high demand. You know, uh, they raised the minimum requirements of athletic trainers, certified athletic trainers. They aligned it with PT and OT basically. Though maybe the compensation isn't on that level. Uh, so it raised the bar significantly. So, and then coming off the pandemic, those individuals in, in that kind of role obviously had a lot of demands and exposure in that regard. So, you know, some people left the industry and then in other cases, it was just supply and demand. You know, there is an NCAA kind of chart where you can calculate based on student athlete participation in sports, you know, what that kind of. Equilibrium is in terms of sports medicine coverage. It equates, let's say, for senior colleges at about two point five, most of our campuses have one athletic trainer. You know, and then the junior colleges, many of them do not have. And the other challenge we find, even trying to get per diem coverage. The last year or two is is very difficult. Even if you wanna pay for a trainer, it's hard, hard to get them. But no, it's definitely an opportunity from a CUNY perspective, absolutely.
Yeah, if we could marry that together. Um, and then just my last uh thing, uh, uh, I'm really glad you mentioned corporate sponsorship in here. Uh, if there's any way to enhance that either through P threes with our facilities that aren't being utilized twenty-four hours a day. Um, at the College of Staten Island, there's a tennis bubble that's obviously used for the tennis team, but uh when they're not using it, which is ninety percent of the time. It's open to uh tennis instruction for the general public, which also brings people onto campus, it brings revenue for the athletic program. Um, if we could, you know, uh, pursue that, or even patches on the jerseys or.
Queens have been very successful in that.
Now, they're they're Division two as well as College of Staten Island, so is that, do you see a divide there with Division two schools versus?
Again, that was really the model for them to support their athletic programs. That funding wasn't coming from. The foundation or a wealthy donor, or maybe like on the Division one level. They had to find a way to make that a sustainable model, you know. Uh, as a former coach of Queens, you know, their summer camp, their tennis bubble, aquatics programming, uh, their fitness center, they sell community passes. It's an entrepreneurial model. The challenge with that is, in the event of a pandemic or something, that, you know. They had a mini tornado on campus a few years ago and it destroyed the tennis bubble and they lost that revenue. I think the only key is the balance in terms of being able to provide that resource and monetizing it. While still providing the resource to the campus, to the students, to the faculty staff. And I think that's that's a management piece. I, you know, haven't been at York, definitely, I I felt that was a tremendous opportunity. With the facilities that they had, and then the facilities that they were developing. That was just kind of being scratching the surface, so to speak. Um, so definitely, there's an opportunity there. In terms of, you know, the uh career fair, that was one way, again. Trying to engage with those business partners, those sponsors, to create and develop those relationships. So hopefully, then they would provide additional support. And and we have, and even, you know. The the last one we did, the Yankees were there, N Y C F C, you know, things of that nature, as well as in, you know, private businesses as well. So we're always, you know, obviously, open to that possibility. Um, the thing with the facilities, again, I think the Manhattan facilities, they do a better job. They have more demand and they're able to kind of utilize it more. The the trade-off, especially for a lot of these departments where staffing is is relatively minimal. Now, if you're adding the rental piece on top of um the athletic piece in the short term, it's being able to manage that. And it could be done, but it's a chicken and the egg. You can kind of ramp it up once you have that regular uh business, but in the short term, it puts in an even greater burden. On those campuses. And then I think beyond that, to incentivize it. If those programs are doing that work, they need to kind of be able to benefit from that in to some degree. So if, you know, during my time at York, we we did develop some of our rentals, whether Catholic High School Association, P S A L. Um, one or two local schools, um, where, you know, we the portion of the returns came back to that department. Especially in a situation where maybe programs aren't supported as much as they might be, so that can make up the difference. As a former coach, even Division two, at Queens College, fundraising was necessary, not just for the needs, I mean, not just for the wants, sometimes for some of the needs. So it's a way you can provide that extra, but you build it in to the to the team bonding, to the team building perspective. Um, so it's a win-win again, where everybody benefits.
Good.
Um, I had a couple of things. One, the great presentation, and it's like you just hear the need and you're just like, oh, you wanna help in all those different elements. Um, but I appreciate the the thorough thoughtful breakdown of it all. The two notes that I had was. I'm glad to see that PepsiCo is supporting through their creator rate and uh and other elements. I say push it a little bit, you know, like they. You know, they have pouring rights here. You should also see if they can support financially, if you guys have. Some sort of yearly events or some sort of programming, I would nudge a little bit more there. I'm glad, like coolers, refrigeration, anything that could could help.
That relationship, from what I understand, historically came through CUNYAC. They were a sponsor of CUNYAC before they came on board to CUNY. Now, again, that's the historical perspective I was shared. Um, they do have a sponsorship over and above the in-kind. Obviously, since the pandemic, nothing has been forthcoming. Um, the fact that we're able to kind of get that portion in the meantime, certainly is impactful for the campuses, and that's been my focus. At the same time, obviously, our main communication in regards to follow-up on the sponsorship piece, which I think for for the conference was thirty thousand. Um, which again, ultimately, uh, it's about being able to provide then additional resources and additional programming. Um, but yes, absolutely, and, you know, we we do try to work with them, but again, I'm trying not to tread on toes, especially with a plexi relationship while that's in negotiation.
Yeah, uh, yeah, cuz each brand has money. Like, you think of each brand, there's an extra funnel of money in in that space. The other piece was um that I thought was really compelling is the A Q um uh availability, like, you know. Being able to make sure that we have the six, I'm gonna say teams, that we need to be able to hold that spot and. You know, what we're doing to make sure, and what we need to do to make sure that we can keep that going, cuz that seems like something critical to to the success. Of being able to kind of maintain those opportunities for for our athletics. Um, that's something else that I'm like.
From a sport perspective, you need to have at least six teams participate, you know, meet the requirement. Uh, if you only have six teams sponsor it, you have no wiggle room. For a program, you need to successfully complete twelve sport seasons to remain in good standing. If you only sponsor twelve, like one of our campuses, again, you have no wiggle room. What I've kind of been pushing and advocating for um is in terms of core sports, which is a best practice. In terms of establishing which sports do we as CUNY are most viable across the board. Um, and then beyond that, um, you know, establishing that as core sports. To have ideally at least. Ideally, thirteen or fourteen campuses sponsor at least those, maybe eight core sport. I mean. At least eight campuses sponsor thirteen or fourteen of those core sports. So if one campus misses or one sport misses, you still protect those A Qs, and you still control. We have eight member campuses on the senior college level.
And we should consider that.
That's something we can control.
Yeah, and and we should consider that something that helps us with recruiting and, you know, all in, right? So like, if we protect that and maybe prioritize some funding to make sure we have that in line to support the schools, to be able to do that. You know, cuz the the chart was very helpful in terms of seeing like which which sports participate where and, you know. Um, but I think that that's another way of advocating, you know, in terms of recruitment, um.
It's certainly a concern been expressed by, let's say, one of the A Ds that sponsors women's soccer. Can potentially impact uh recruiting, student experience, retention, in the event of.
And soccer is going like this, like now that it's coming to Queens and the stadium and all that, it's a good time to kind of see what falls from that space. I didn't want to extend it much.
I went through the middle stage process at York and the assessment piece, and that that was very helpful. And I've tried to utilize kind of that methodology in terms of this, and data-driven, deliberate, in terms of what we can and can't control and and. How we can best identify potential solutions. But ultimately, dealing with the human element and, you you know, there's no quick fixes, but it's a case of having those tough conversations.
Any additional comments, concerns, questions? Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll now call on Student Trustee Salamatu Domboya to present information item three B, Campus Engagement and Collaboration.
And if you could just give one second, he's gonna download the presentation for you.
Oh, it's a good-looking guy.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Samuel Dinabuya, and I will be. Take this as an analysis of what we already know about student engagement, and I think. What we need to coordinatealize in order to understand what's going on here. So, student life, student engagement in general, has multiple dimensions. But I think that what most people think about when they think about student engagement and student life is the students complaining and the students throwing events. It's a fact, right? If it's not organizations like U S S, you know, U S S don't do legislative work, you know, U S S because. We are, we have a student trustee and all this, but locally, when you hear about student engagement, you're gonna think students are not attending events or things like that. But there is so much more to everything that impacts student engagement and what student engagement creates, and these are the list down below. When you talk about student engagement and student leadership, it has to do with students taking the responsibility to answer questions from other students. Taking the responsibility to sometimes know about their academics, but being able to direct students to other things. It's about technology. Students deal with budget allocations when you talk about student clubs. You talk about student governments and other campus organizations. It's about planning. It comes with burnout sometimes. We even have to know about campus facilities. Because these events you know about, they are not thrown up in the air. We do have Zoom uh options now, thankfully, but a lot of these also happen in person. And uh, some of this, of course, goes with providing also resources, food, clothes, and I mean from student activity fees. When we throw events, we have foods to give students. Sometimes we are gonna do uh raising of clothes and all that to be able to provide to students what they need. And uh, there is also the level of concern that we have about student engagement, student life. That's gonna be, we talk about funding security, we talk about mental health, this is no. We talk about the fact that students don't show up when we put things together for them. You're gonna have an event, you're gonna have a giveaway, they won't show up. Or they're not interested anymore, and all of that comes together with students are not uh aware of what's available for them. On the other hand, and the below is very important, we need to think about, I'm gonna use the word. Chaotic for the students who just comes into CUNY, CUNY, we need to think about the separation of so many departments. And so many elements that of what does CUNY. For example, you take the issue of mental health itself, right? Students are gonna know about one department that provides mental health services or in charge of mental health. While there are maybe ten people that have mental health initiatives and people from depart- departments. You're gonna have ten different departments that offer mental health services, twenty different little initiatives, little new projects around, and that's not helpful. And that makes me feel like student engagement is fighting its way through CUNY. With all these different buckets and all these different things happening. Now, don't get me wrong, decentralization is important, right? Because it allows all these different elements to develop themselves. But I think from a student perspective, we need a one stop for all. Now, further in that conversation, all the different issues that you just saw earlier could correspond to different things in CUNY. You can talk about the Office of Transformation, Academic Affairs, um, Student Wellness, Finance and Budgeting. And Finance and Budgeting, we know it's on their CUNY operations and all of that. So it's, again, it's a lot of different buckets. And that's why I was saying, student engagement is really fighting its way through CUNY now. It's like, we wanna do it. But it's in a way that the decentralization causes a lot of confusion and is not helpful. Now, what should student affairs be? Student affairs should be all of these things. And when I talk about student affairs, it can be student affairs on local campuses, the Central Office of Student Affairs. This student affairs committee should be able to deal with all of these different buckets. It shouldn't always be student affairs broadly, and then we let everything else happen. Because from spending so much time here and talking with so many student leaders. The knowledge of student leaders of how the processes work kind of affects what happens on these committees, right? On this committee in particular. If the students know what they're doing on their campus, are able to come up with the right initiatives and the right questions. They're gonna get their way through here and pass the resolutions that matter to them. But the reality is, if they don't know, they don't know. We know that students are in office when we talk about student governments for a short amount of time, and a lot of this time is spent learning. Learning about the processes, and by the time they learn, it's over. And then a new group of students come, and this committee is going to. Keep doing what it does, which is not, and which is not bad, but it could do better. And I think the way it could do better is finding a way to deal with all these different buckets kind of separately and having them all come together here. How do we include conversations, consistent conversations and initiatives about budgeting when it comes to this committee here? We should be able to discuss student activity fees outside of students coming here for a referendum. We should be able to give this understanding to the students. We should be able to discuss leadership and advocacy. We should be able to discuss legislations. And I think student wellness is a big topic, we should be able to do that, but in a very proactive way, and I think the productivity is very missing. How do we do that? Now, the University Student Senate, we know what it is, uh, existing to really. Be that kind of liaison between the different uh structures in the Chancellorial Office and CUNY Central and the local campuses. Helping the student leaders on the local campuses find themselves, find their way. Now, one aspect that I decided to focus on is this concept of a liaison, sorry for being silly, this concept of a liaison, right? So, U S S has a liaison to the Office of Student Affairs, right? That's one stop. We have a question about student affairs. I know I don't have to go to V C Maybank directly, I can go to Joseph Awaji, and he's gonna get me an answer, right? And if there is no answer there, we know we can go to Ian, and that's gonna happen. There is this liaison. Recently, we have done everything we can to renew our collaboration with the Office of Government Relations. And that happened too. Very grateful for them. We have done a cherry in there. If we have a question about what CUNY is doing and all legislative governments, we can go to Donette, and we can also go to Senior Vice Chancellor Linda Grace. These are two people that we can go to for questions, and of course, V C Rollis is so helpful for that. When we talk about, I'm gonna talk about communications, for example, we have built that bridge with um. One student that's working uh in the Office of Communication and Marketing with Alberto, Manisha Ro, who she's a student at Buruk. So that's a contact for us. We have a question about an ad, we go to Manisha. I don't need to give a call to the Vice Chancellor, no, no. And I know that's accessible to me as a trustee, but I think it should be accessible to all the people in U S S, our student leaders as well. We shouldn't have to go to the chancellor for every single issue that we have, or go to the person who kind of have the last year or the last signature for that. And I'm saying this also because in the beginning of my term, I had a conversation with the chancellor. We were talking and I asked him a question, and his opinion was, everybody thinks that when there is an issue, I should be the first person they go to. But there are so many other people that could answer that question probably better than I do because they are on the field. So students need the connection with these people that are on the field, and I think that this committee. And every other Office of Student Affairs on campuses, and the Central Office of Student Affairs should be the place where we find these people. We need a one stop. The confusion has really to stop, and that materializes itself in these four different parts. I'm always going to start with the Office of Student Affairs. This should be our one stop. I shouldn't have to think about uh the COO's office if I have a question about CUNY, but. I think I should be able to come to Student Affairs, or I should have a person that I can reach out to directly to ask these different questions. Without having to necessarily email uh E E C Batista for that. It, there should be an engagement of all the different parties that play a role, because again, we don't only organize parties. We don't only just sit there and have our political debates sometimes. That's not all we do. We do so many different things that happen to affect students on a day-to-day basis. So we need that connection with government relations, we need that connections with the finance offices, with operations, with facilities. We need that one-stop person, and we can get to that one-stop person with the Student Affairs Office. And we can get to that one-stop person with the Student Affairs Office. We need now the other, the Chancellery and all these other offices to also come to us. And that's the illustration you saw earlier about campus engagement pushing its way through campus. Because we are pushing our way through all these different doors to get one piece of information. To get one piece of information that could have saved us a lot of trouble. Because there's a lot of misinformation going around. Students are not interested. They don't look. But sometimes the looking is pretty hard because of how decentralized things are. And again, we must be proactive. At this point, we know what the problems are. We know what the students are going through. We kind of have an idea. We had an idea before COVID, during COVID now. I think that's enough time for research. Research never stops, but we have enough to start. But we shouldn't wait for something to kind of explode before we start. So as much as the students have to be proactive, knowing that again, the students being proactive really depends on what type of student group is here. The administration also has to show this level of productivity. And that's how CUNY is going to make it happen, right? Instead of student engagement pushing, 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 and it's sweating and it's completely tired. With all these different solutions, we could go to a point where it's becoming smoother. The door is there. I'm not having to pull, but CUNY is helping me push. So we have to start pushing. I really wanted to start this conversation with these little illustrations in order for us to understand that there is a healthy level of decentralization needed here. And I wanna talk about athletics. I talk about care. These different programs are, yes, managed by great people. But when we talk about student life, the first thing that comes to students' head is Student Affairs. And we cannot expect them to know that CUNY has so many different departments where things can happen. So I'm talking about a department. I'm talking about this committee finding a structure that helps it address all these different issues in a proactive manner without necessarily having to be a student that comes in with the big issue. Every issue should be, the, the issues that are the most prominent should be the big issues now. I don't know if it's gonna look like town halls. I don't know if it's gonna look like maybe more frequent little group meetings um or different planning sessions. I don't know if it's gonna look like a subcommittee to the subcommittee to the committee. It's gonna look like something, but these conversations need to happen. And um when they will happen, I think we will start seeing a great deal of change in this conversation about student engagement. Because we won't only be bringing students together, but this is about bringing all these departments together where they intertwine to directly affect students. Thank you.
Uh any questions or concerns? Thank you, Trustee Dumbuya. I uh, I just wanna commend uh the USS. I, when I was your age at Hunter Mountain, I wasn't doing as constructive things as you were. Uh the uh, the uh, and thank you for inviting me and, and spending some time uh with the leaders there. It was very, very helpful for me. I, I can point to two things from my facilities work. We, we didn't, uh, because you guys are on the ground, the students are the ones utilizing the facilities. Uh, there was a problem with some of the bathrooms that were out of service at Brooklyn College. That was bought to us by USS. Uh, and then at LaGuardia and Baruch with some of the elevators that were out of service that were affecting thousands of people. That quite frankly, by the time it snaked its way through the original um structure of CUNY, it would have taken forever. So thank, thank you to the USS. And that's exactly why this committee is here. So, thank you.
Thank you. I want to commend you for your presentation, Trustee Dumbuya. And to say that, you know, I am certainly embrace what you've offered. And your images are important. The pushing and the pulling matters. And so I do believe that this is an opportunity for us to work collaboratively, to be certain that what needs to be heard within the Chancellery and other parts of the university is heard. That we open up the door for that to happen. Yeah, the, the doors don't have to stay closed and be pushed on or pulled on. But we need to open those doors so that we can truly hear what it is that's critical for students. Because that's why we're here. And, and Trustee Dumbuya hears me say this all the time. Our why is in this room today. This is, this is what we are about. Our why is our students. And so if we believe that, then we have to make certain that we can hear from you. So I really do value your presentation. I value your perspective in terms of talking about how that engagement has to be proactive from both sides. That we have to reach to you as well as you reaching to us, but it, but cutting down on the chaos. So I want you to know that I heard you. I'm hoping that you'll share your, your presentation, that we'll be able to have it as a part of the record. But also that we'll get a chance to, to contemplate it and not just sit back and say, oh, we, we heard from Trustee Dumbuya on the second of October and, and move on, but that we start to think about how we use it effectively. So I wanted to say thank you.
Trustee.
Um, that was a, thank you. That was a great uh presentation, Trustee. I, I really appreciate also um uh how simply you put it. And I, I, I live off examples because I feel like you really can make connections uh on it. One of the things that really, I think, um struck me in what you were saying is like the accessibility, right? I mean, we all wo- work in a space that network matters and access matters. Um, he, being able to have who to go to to work on things can shorten the timeframe on things. And maybe you still copy the um Vice Chancellor on these messages so she can nudge a little bit for you too. But if you know where to go and, and it's a manageable place, um it's something that I think can, can help and move the process. And, and I, I appreciate the, the breakdown of how you put that together and, and even just streamlining. I like how you said decentralization is helpful, but at the same time, being able to go, right? If our students, especially our new students, don't know where to go, don't know how to connect, our students that maybe were doing well and all of a sudden are not doing well, don't know where to go to get that support, we're, we're not attaining them. Um, so I think all of these elements uh play well. And I think even if it's just to start in the conversation so that we can build off of that, I think it's extremely helpful. So thank you.
Yes, President Kudiflius.
I just wanna thank you. I thought it was a thoughtful presentation. It was also a very thoughtful response. So what I'm hearing uh uh at the table is uh from the trustees, um from the vice, the, the Vice Chancellor, from you, is this willingness to create processes or uh get to a point where the information you, the students need is more accessible. I do it in a small way. I also in this regard, I meet monthly with the student government. And I bring the vice presidents, everybody, students, academic affairs, the finance and the counselors. And if there's a personal complaint about something, that they meet individually with academic affairs. But everything gets answered and we all learn. And, 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 and that's a way. But what I'm hearing here, which is much more complex, because you're talking about representing students from, you know, twenty-five institutions, uh is, is that you have a, a Vice Chancellor that's willing to work. You have trustees that are very willing to work. And you have come in in such a quiet, cerebral manner, beautiful. Also, the images are just gorgeous. So congratulations and let the conversation continue. Thank you.
Yes, Vice.
Um, so I'm new to this committee and I'm gonna ask a basic question. And I know it'll take more than just a moment to answer, but so how does, how can the Board of Trustees actually help establish this kind of network? I mean, what, what happens now? I mean, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm new and I know it's a big question, but uh what, what happens? I mean, do you need a lawsuit against the university about the accessibility issue in order to create an initiative? Or is it a presentation that will be enough of an incentive? I mean, what happens? You know, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm asking a big question, but.
No, next steps are important. Um, we should certainly set up a, you know, uh after this committee meeting, we can meet offline and see what you, uh how USS wants to establish that forward. But uh the CUNY itself has started a one-stop process for the exact same reason. There's no reason that we can't extend that to our student government. I relate it to when I worked in government for elected officials. You know, uh you didn't have to call the mayor every time it was flooding. You could call the Commissioner DEP or the Borough Commissioner and say, hey, I've got a, you know, I've got a storm drain that's completely stopped up or I've got a floodgate that's not open. And that there was no reason to involve the, the mayor directly. Because if you called the mayor, he'd probably call the DEP Commissioner right after you got off the phone anyway. Um, so it makes sense to me, uh, the lens that I see the world through. But as far as the process goes, uh, you know, that's something that we'll, we'll start on together. That's why we.
And bring some of the other stakeholders uh.
Assistant Vice Chancellor James, yes.
Yes, thank you. Um, as I was telling, uh Vice Chancellor Maybank, we already have something sort of in place. As Trustee Dumbuya said, we have a liaison to the USS, which is Mr. Joseph Awaji. So he handles all communication for USS. What we could do is expand on it, where we could have a point person from every office. So the Office of the Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost from Facilities and Planning. So we have a point person, which makes it much easier. So we could start with this and that we can do immediately.
Sure. I love it.
Absolutely. And I think that's something that carries through different administration at that point. USS could have a set directory of point people in all different offices that they could contact if anything happens. The Liaison to Student Affairs, for example, attends all of our USS meetings. The person is there, Jo- uh Mr. Awaji is there. He answers questions, he's helpful to students, and then reports back directly to the Office of Student Affairs. And in this conversation of a one-stop, as we think about it further, I want us to think about what Student Affairs mean from a structural standpoint, even the Office of Student Affairs. Like, what does it mean? And we should consider that question considering all of the different parts of CUNY in terms of initiatives that do things similar to what Student Affairs does or what Student Affairs would do. Maybe we have duplicates in certain places. Maybe there are things that are very similar. Is there a necess- is a necessity to merge them at some point? I think that would be helpful to again have a more focused, uh, a more focused like vision for the students. Like, when I look in this direction of mental health, I don't have three different programs that do the exact same thing. I don't have three different places I could go to, but maybe it goes from ten to three or from three to one. Probably there, there are these different possibilities. So I think that looking at these main student issues, we know food, transportation, mental health. Who in CUNY offers these services? Where could we find this help? What these programs look like and how could we put them together? I think that would be very helpful to move forward.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other additional comments or questions? Thank you very much. Um, now my, my favorite part of what we just heard from a student, uh, we're gonna hear from these students. I'll turn it back over to Vice Chancellor Maybank.
Well, I'm honored today to have four of our students with us. I'm gonna ask that you come and sit in the four chairs over here. Um, and I'm gonna set this one up for you as, as they're coming. Uh, so I have a question that I need you to answer for me. And this is the participatory part of the meeting, so you have to, you have to take a guess. And so my, my question is, what do Georgia, the Gambia, Bhutan, and Niger have in common?
What was the third place?
Georgia.
No, the third place.
The uh, the country, not the state.
Bhutan.
Oh, Bhutan, right, okay, okay.
They're all members of the United Nations or they're all represented here by us?
That's true, down, just down the street. There's someone whose story is connected to just down the street, by the way.
I, I, I would guess that these are students come from those locations?
CUNY is what they have in common, okay? And so when we think about CUNY all too often, we focus specifically on New York City. And we don't think about our reach so far beyond. CUNY has a reach that goes across the waters of this world and pulls in the world. And today you get to have exposure to those countries that I mentioned. So, I thought I was advancing. So, we are not talking about the state of Georgia. Please do not ask about Atlanta when you start your questioning, because that is not what we are referencing. But we have four students seated before you today and we are going to start with Mariammy Gogoladze. And I have practiced these. From Georgia, who is a student at Kingsborough in Tourism and Hospitality. So, Mariam.
Hello, one more time. I'm Mariam Gogoladze from a very small country of Georgia, which is five thousand miles away and about the half size of the New York State. And the um Vice Chancellor mentioned, I'm a freshman at the Kingsbury Community College majoring in Tourism and Hospitality. So my American dream started in twenty seventeen when I applied for the Future Leaders Exchange Program, but couldn't succeed. And six years later, I came in the US, but as an exchange visitor, not a, not as a student. And I must admit that the CUNY's uh marketing group did a very good job because I still remember how, how I discovered about CUNY for the first time. I was on a train and suddenly saw an ad saying you belong here, the City University of New York. And then I told myself that I had to find out more. I did. And that's where my journey of changing my status starts. So I have many Georgian friends here who are students at different colleges of CUNY as well. And they helped me through this journey, applying and navigating through it. And after months, I have obtained my student status, became a student here. And I want to say thank you to CUNY for giving me the opportunity to re- uh, receive a free room from my aunt and attending a college at the same time because it has um campuses on all five boroughs of New York City. And I want to say special thank you for Louise and Leonard Riggio, Kingsbury Community College and CUNY for obtaining a new scholarship for international and out-of-state students, which I obtained in honor of my recently um lost great-grandma, which was an international student as well, but in twentieth century. And I'll never forget my DSOs who introduced themselves as the um my adoptive family. I'll never forget um the Georgian um Administration Counselor at my college. I'll never forget the first impression of my orientation meeting, um, that I could rely on my president, Shvetor. And I want to thank, uh, thank all these amazing pers- people at, at my college. And the special thank you goes to CUNY for helping me make my um dream come true in this concrete jungle. I don't know where this path leads me, but I know it's a correct one. And I want to remember some of the words from my new friend who is here. That's, this is just the beginning. And despite of the fact of how much I miss my family and friends back there, I know that I should keep fighting and reach my goals in the future. Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Abdurrahman Touré from the Gambia. New map, okay? And he is a student at BMCC in Nursing.
Good afternoon to you all. Uh, my name is Abdurrahman Touré. Um, I'm from the Gambia, which is, I'm like two million people. Just imagine that comparing that um with, with the population in New York, it's quite a bit different. So I did a high school in my country and then I started having this dream about coming to US and then study something related to health, especially like nursing or like medicine. So I came to the country in like two thousand and nineteen. And then I came to New York. I wa- I was a loner. Um, I didn't have like any family here. So I started making research about like which school will I go to? And then from there, I saw that there is, there is a CUNY, CUNY Community College that is around. And then there's a lot of diversity and then there's a lot of opportunities that are available. And then I did. There's a lot of diversity and then there's a lot of opportunities that are available and then I decided to go to BMCC. So when I went to BMCC, it at the beginning, it was not something that was easy, because um English is not my first language, so. Doing like English one-on-one was quite bit difficult, but the professors that I had were very, very, very helpful, because. There are so many like opportunities that are that are in BMCC, that example like. The L R C, there is a learning resource center. Um my professor will always advise me to go there and then seek some opportunities in order to develop um my English. In order to write like the type of letters that that is required in order in order for me to move on with with the things that I need. And then things were very helpful from there, moving on, and then I have to do um my prerequisites. In BMCC and now this past semester, I just got enrolled in the nursing department and now I'm studying the nursing. And now I'm studying nursing, so it's been quite challenging, but all that I will say is like BMCC has been very helpful to me. Um before I came here, I was like, I was very quiet and then I was not engaging in a lot of things, but. With the help that I'm having from BMCC, things are very, very helpful these days, so. I just wanna say that um I'm very helpful to be here and then. I wanna thank CUNY too for providing me this opportunity to study uh my dream that is to do nursing and then I thank you all for your attention.
And next, we will hear from Tenzin Pelchak, who is from Bhutan. Tens currently attends Baruk, I think he can tell you the other part of that story. As a computer information systems major, I think I got all of that right. And by the way, you're getting a geography lesson.
Hello, everyone. I hope all of you are having a wonderful evening. My name is Tenzin Pelchak and I'm an international student from Bhutan. Small country uh right nestled between India and China, two really big company uh countries. Um and I'm honored to share my CUNY journey and experience. Uh my CUNY journey began at Logodia Community College. Shaping my path to Baruk College, where I currently major in computer information system. And I am double minoring in management and economics. I aspire to be a data scientist and solve problems by using data-driven approaches to tackle a wide range of complex issues. Across various industries. At Logodia, the Logodias Foundation Scholarship provided me with partial scholarship that helped me focus more on my classes. And uh a few research for my classes. And it helped me explore my opportunities and explore my career career. In Logodia, the President's Society Program provided me with essential leadership training, uh especially to first-generation students like me. Uh even my first suit was bought for me by the President's Society, symbolizing the transformational support I received there. I then moved to Baruk, I transferred to Baruk, uh and at Baruk, I was opened with diversity and the reputation that it held in the city. Uh two offices have been pivotal, the International Student's Office and the Baruk Star Development Center. The International Student Office helped me by giving me workshops. They would they hosted weekly workshops on O P T, C P T and job search strategies. Especially with my case, such a while maintaining uh F one status. And the Star Career Development Center. Um they went above and beyond just resume reviews. Uh one example would be the recent data challenge that. Uh that just concluded this Saturday. I'm glad to share that I learned a lot in this short period of time while taking part in the data challenge. Uh CUNY has provided numerous opportunities, including on-campus uh employment. I currently work as a peer leader in Logodia Community College and I witnessed firsthand the positive impact of peer mentoring. This summer, uh I partici- I participated in the CUNY career launch, an invaluable internship experience that I learned. Uh I'm also happy to share that I was offered a job at the end of the term, which sadly I could not take up because of my F one status. Uh as uh while I appreciate all these opportunities, I would also like to share a few challenges that we face. And one of them is uh access to scholarships. Many international students work multiple part-time jobs, all while attending full-time uh full-time credit, that is twelve to fifteen credits. And they also support families back home. This struggle is a daily reality. And I humbly request the board to consider expanding scholarship opportunities to for international students. Ensuring that individuals from around the world can benefit from the world-class education that CUNY provides. Uh in con- like I would like to add now, uh in conclusion, my CUNY journey has transformed me. And I hope my experiences uh emphasize the value of CUNY. I also hope that I was able to give you some insight on the challenges that international students face. Thank you for your time and consideration. Uh together, we can make CUNY a global beacon of education and opportunity. And uh I'm really grateful that I joined CUNY. Uh I've no regrets that I started my career at CUNY. And I really hope in the future I can give back to CUNY when I can. Thank you so much.
And Safiyatu Jacoba, I did it right, from Niger. Um she is also a student at Baruk with a major in statistics.
Yes, so I will start now. Um hello, everyone. My name is Safiya Tu Yakuba and I come from Niger. I'm currently in a in my third year as an international student at Baruk College majoring in statistics. I am deeply honored today to share my journey with you. Growing up as a third culture kid and a global nomad was both a blessing and a challenge at the same time. My father was a diplomat and he led my family on a continuous journey. Relocating ac- across countries like Mali, Niger, Senegal, New York and Kenya. This nomadic lifestyle instilled in me a profound appreciation for for different cultures, but also a longing for stability. Among these journeys, New York City became a pivotal chapter in my life. I moved here at the age of fifteen with my family. And although my journey here ended two years later, when we had to move to a different country, a part of me always felt incomplete. As if there were more to to learn, explore and experience in this vibrant city. Something about New York kept pulling me back, urging me to return and complete the story I had started. The decision to pursue my education in in New York was deeply personal. It was a quest for stability, a chance to build a life of my own away from the constant shuffle between airports. After extensive research, I chose CUNY specifically Baruk College for its exceptional quality of education and affordability. I knew that a CUNY degree would not just be a certificate, it would be a key that would un- that would unlock countless doors. Especially when I returned to my home country. My experience at CUNY has been profoundly transformative, thanks in large part to my very first statistics. Class taught by Professor Ethan Ray at Baruk College. I will forever be grateful to him. This class became a turning point for me, sparking a page a passion for data that I never knew existed. CUNY provided me with more than just knowledge, it gave me a purpose. Um nurturing my curiosity and guiding me onto a path in the world of data. Some of CUNY's resources have been extremely valuable in my journey as an international student. From my very first encounter with therapy at the counseling center to the consistent support of the tutoring center during academic challenges. As well as the vibrant student clubs and events at Baruk, CUNY has provided me with an enriching experience. These experiences allowed me to immerse myself in a in a diverse and inclusive community. Nurturing meaningful connections with people from diverse backgrounds. CUNY's commitment to fostering diversity and inclusivity has truly enriched my experience as an African Muslim woman. It also helped with occasional homesickness. Looking forward, I am eagerly anticipating the doors that a CUNY degree will open for me. My goal is to secure multiple few, multiple internships opportunities, allowing me to gain real-world experience. And contribute meaningfully to my field. Ultimately, I plan to continue my academic journey by pursuing a master's degree in applied statistics. From one of CUNY's institutions, I li- I really love statistics, by the way. In closing, I want to express my heartfelt gratitude to the CUNY community for providing me with not just an education, but a home. Your support has empowered me to dream, to aspire and to believe in the countless possibilities of the future. So I am very, very, very proud to be a part of CUNY, an institution that not only educates, but also transforms lives. Thank you for your time and your commitment to the students.
So you have voices, not from the places that you might think. Not from the places that come to mind immediately when you think of international students. But people who have come from places that we might never have named. And that have chosen CUNY. Henry Miller said, one's destination is never a place, but a new way of seeing things. And that is what you have represented here today. I will say to you that as CUNY lifts, as CUNY lifts New York, CUNY moves the world. And exposes the world to new ways of seeing things through the eyes of our international students. So please.
Can I just say thank you? What incredible ambassadors. You're looking at a president who's an immigrant, who has four CUNY degrees. So I understand you wanting to continue your masters and and everything else, because once you're a CUNY kid, you're a CUNY kid. You these are really beautiful, powerful stories. I'm so moved. Thank you, thank you so much. There's there's a question, I don't know.
I myself am an international student and I'm so happy to meet my neighbors. Like, like, um it's it's it just feels amazing. Some of the best student leaders that I've met in CUNY were all international students, coming from these countries you would never hear about. So for me, it's just amazing and so heartwarming to see that we come from other parts of the world. In this country that we don't know about and we just keep moving, like we've been here our whole lives. And not putting limits to ourselves, because it's unknown ar- arena or anything like that. I'm always very proud when I see that, because I came to this country thinking. I will not let the barriers block me from doing what my purpose is. That's what I'm observing here. You're still following your purpose, you're still doing what you need to do to become the person that you need to become. Despite being in a whole other country, so congratulations.
Well, thank you all very much. It was very moving. As a son of a Greek immigrant, his first classes were at the college of Staten Island. I appreciate that. But you're, we do have a motto, start here, go anywhere. We're gonna have to.
Go anywhere, come here.
And and as uh as far as you go, you know, you can go to graduate school, extend that thesis. Let's uh let's work on that. Um thank you very much. We appreciate all of you uh sharing part of your story with us. It's very important that we learn that. Go ahead, trustee.
Um this is always my favorite part of it. It's like the it's it's the best part of being a trustee is engaging with the students. I mean, I love engaging with faculty as well, but this is a treat for me, obviously. All my audiences are, um but I'm gonna butcher all your names, but Mari- Mariani. Um you know, I I love your your passion. I love that you mentioned how. You came to CUNY and found a Georgianian family, like network here, right? Like that makes me so excited that your counselor was even from there, like wow, that's that's a great connection and. Um you know, still wanting to to do more. Uh Abu Dham? Yeah.
Abdurrahman.
Abu Dham. Uh um I love that, you know, like I could I could only appreciate how hard it is to learn. Something as challenging as nursing in an in a second language, that you were still like, you know, like it's incredible. So whatever your challenge is and you know, please continue to push forward and. Being here today to take the time to share this with us is you helping other students, so thank you for for that. I know that can be easy, um uh and we're happy to support your dream. Um Tenzin, right, uh you know, eh I I loved your story, your journey. And even after everything you wanna do, looking to still give back, you know, like whenever you get there, you're already doing that now. Um and even though you weren't able to accept that job. Because of your F one status, you have to feel so proud that that was offered to you. It just says so much of what you bring to the table and. And I appreciate that extra challenge of how we can help support, not just within CUNY, but like anyone I know and other places that I can say. You know, what can we do for the state to give more money for international students? Um we'll look into that homework. And and Sapitu, um you know, I love your passion, like I love statistics. Like, you know, it's it's so great and and you know, I had took so many notes that the tutoring center was so helpful to you, your first professor. Um that CUNY is a key to unlock so many doors. Um and and that it provides a home for you, this is all beautiful, it's so inspiring. And um you know, you you you're transforming lives just being here, so I'm looking forward to seeing where all of you end up one day. Thank you.
Uh with that, uh with no more items on the agenda, I'll move to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.